Classification meeting in this select board meeting to order. If you could all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin's citizen statements and petitions. Okay. A couple of emails that went to everybody on the board. Just a couple of different ones here. There's an email that just came in from the building inspector. I forwarded to everybody. And addressed, it's a response back to me. He, John Erickson indicated he received a complaint earlier this week from residents on Bicknell Street about an issue. And he'll be inspecting the property tomorrow and over the weekend. And he'll keep, he'll keep the board and town administrator up to date with their findings. The other email that we just received is from Patrick Gerton, who is a member of the zoning board, and I'll just read it says, Hello, everyone, I want to let you know that I'm resigning from the board effective today. I've let Jim, which I assume is Jim Cardy, the chair, know earlier today, but wanted to let the entire team know. My company has lifted the COVID restrictions and as a result will be required to travel frequently, often on short notice, including the first week of December. I apologize for any disruptions. I've enjoyed my time on the ZBA these many years and in particular time with this team. I wish everyone the best and look forward to seeing you in the future. And then it just, it addresses the town clerk of Ellen, who was their admin. To let me know if they needed the board and this was forwarded to me and I forwarded, I think it was forwarded to the whole. So let's move on to classification hearing. So the Men and Select Board will hold a hearing on property tax classification Wednesday, November 16th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. There'll be several policy decision alternatives discussed by those present before the Select Board. Determine the guidelines to be established for allocating the percentage of the tax burden for residential, commercial, industrial and personal property. Oral testimony may be given at the hearing, but it will be limited to three minutes per taxpayer. So I need a motion to open the hearing.
Move to open FY23 property tax classification hearing.
Second, which is made in second, we need a roll call vote. Raleigh, aye.
Chanel, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Brucos, aye.
Great. Please. We have the principal assessor and one of the elected assessors here. So if you want to walk us through.
I do the work, I let him do the talking.
Very true. This is an annual required hearing required by state law in which the board, select board needs to make several decisions, which where I knock it on the floor. I'll go through at the end. Thank you, Gene. I'll go through at the end, but just to, it's also a time where you learn of the financial picture and growth of the town. And I might kid enough to do that, but thank you. Basically, the fiscal 23 levy, which is the amount being raised through property taxes, including debt exclusions, this year is nineteen million, four hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred eighty, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars. New growth for the year in dollar terms is three hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred twenty-two. And that is resulting from anything that had not been built, any, any real and, and personal property that's been new and not taxed before in the, during fiscal year 22. The total taxable value of the town grew by a hundred nineteen million, four hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred fifty to a total of one billion, three hundred thirty million, one hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars. That breaks down to eighty-nine point six percent of that comes from residential property, five point five eight six three from commercial, point three four three seven from industrial property and four point four three seven six percent from personal property. One of the decisions you, you make tonight is whether to go with a single rate or a dual rate. Mendon has traditionally gone with a single rate. Given the value and the levy that would result in a fourteen dollar and sixty cent per thousand tax rate this year and leave a whopping eighty-five dollars and eighty-three cents of excess levy capacity available to spend if needed.
Not available.
It's not available.
It's not available because of rounding. It's got to a point where you just can't round anymore.
When you take the number of single family homes divided by the value of all single family homes, you come up with an average value. This year, the value of an average single family home is five hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. And that's an approximate nine percent increase over last year's value, which on the last sheet was
five oh five.
Five oh five. And reflects basically the continued increase in the market prices of homes that's gone on over the last few years. The over, overall town revaluation and mass laws require that we go to a hundred percent full and fair market value every year. So the annual evaluation resulted in a nine percent median increase in valuation residential and a three percent median increase on commercial. Just to make sure everyone knows the terms, median means that half of the values are above that and half are below it. But it's not the average, it's the midpoint. So if you took a, the average home at five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, times the single rate plus the community preservation assessment, you'd come up with a
This isn't the same. What I've done is just for simplicity, I took a house worth five hundred thousand and a house worth six hundred thousand, gave them the nine percent, so it's not the five fifty-four, that's why.
My apologies.
Yeah.
But basically you can see the math on, on the sheet we handed out of what the tax rate would be at the fourteen sixty.
With the new value.
With the new value. And so a five hundred, a forty-five thousand dollar home would be, would be paying, including the CPA, eight thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars, ninety-one cents in taxes. Further, we've broken out the, the impact on the tax rate of the various debt exclusions. And currently the land, the phenol land purchase and fire station, the club renovation, Misco Hill green repair, library purchase and renovation, police station at a total of eighty-three cents per thousand dollars valuation into the tax rate. If you did shift the rate, we have examples of a, a shift at the full hundred fifty percent allowed by law at a hundred ten percent and a hundred one percent. And just to go to a hundred one percent, which should be a one percent shift, the rate would be fourteen fifty-eight rather than the fourteen sixty, but the business rate would be fourteen seventy-five. An additional still additional monies. The other things you look at in addition to whether to have a single rate is whether to do what's known as a residential exemption. That is primarily done in only communities that have a lot of second summer homes. And the biggest examples are mostly the Cape and the North Shore of Boston have them. It, we don't have the number of vacation homes, if we have any in this town to make it justifiable. The other is the small commercial exemption, which is earmarked for businesses with no more than 10 people with a valuation less than a million dollars. However, it goes to the owner of the building and most of the buildings in town that might qualify rent out these spaces. So the benefit goes not to the business, but to the landlord. So we've never offered it here and it doesn't make sense to offer it. So the, the three things your board needs to vote on somewhat quickly and singular dual rate, whether to have a residential exemption and whether they have the commercial exemption. We're recommending not to do either the residential or commercial. Traditionally, Mendon has had a single rate. My own opinion and the other two board members, like I know I can speak for them because we've discussed this. We don't have a big enough business base to go to a dual rate. And when you don't have like the big box stores and things like that, and I like to point to Milford's downtown as example, you crush the small businesses. It's overwhelming for them.
Unless you have more like a seventy thirty shift.
Yeah.
That's when it maybe makes sense.
You know, I'll, I'll give example of one where it makes eminent sense is Cambridge gives the commercial exemption. And in fact, they're the only non-seaside town that gives the residential exemption. But they're ninety percent commercial and 10% residential. So they have ninety percent of the tax base subsidizing the 10% of the homeland. We don't have that, we're, we're the opposite. You know, we're at eighty-nine point six, we're ninety percent residential. We don't have the tax base to afford it to a dual rate.
And we need to work on attracting more commercial businesses to town. Yes, we don't have a lot to offer. A single tax rate would help with that also.
I'll, I'll also tell you that I personally interviewed the three businesses that located, or two main businesses that came and located on 140 about three years ago, and that was Brazza Construction and the Gasco Repair Garage, which has since expanded to the car wash in the second building. Both of them said the main reason they came to Mendon from Milford was our single tax rate, that they were getting taxed out of existence. And I have to tell you, if you look at them, those companies are thriving down there. And really speak highly of being here. And it's good to know that, but if you go to that last page in fiscal year twenty, two thousand and three, we were ninety, about ninety-two percent residential and we went as low over the years as down to eighty-seven point five in fiscal eighteen, but since then we've been climbing back up because we have more residences coming in than business. And you really need a, a better balance than that. In a town like this, it probably be more, you know, I'd be, as a taxpayer, who knows a little bit about this? I'd like to see it much more, you know, eighty, twenty. Just for comparisons, I am the assessor in Holliston. It's eighty-one nineteen right now over there. And it actually
Based on the downtown district because they don't have a lot of box stores there. Well, they have that.
They don't have boxes, they actually have, they actually have three industrial parks people don't even know exist. I have to tell you, I've been driving through that town for 30 years and until I became the assessor there, I knew about Hoppingbrook off of sixteen. On the Sherburne line, there's two very large ones with a lot of industrial use.
On that side, yeah.
That most people don't even know exist. But they actually, they actually increased residential over commercial this year because they had seventy homes that were new.
Yeah, they also have what, seven growth facilities?
Yeah, well, even with the seven marijuana growth facilities, five of which are operating. And, and by the way, they contributed, you want to talk about free cash? They contributed a million dollars this year in free cash dollars to spend. The, the commercial property percentage still dropped this year. And they're, they're one of a kind things, those facilities.
Based off the three percent?
No. That's based on the real estate and personal property.
Personal property that those growth facilities utilize, the equipment is, is astronomical.
When you, when you, if, if you want to digress a minute, when you build out a growth facility, about forty percent of the cost goes into the building. Before you move anything into it, the, the HVAC system is specialized, the grow rooms and the way they're built to be germ-free, it's like building a hospital operating room. The electrical and plumbing needs all become in assessing terms, part of the building. So if that company went out of business tomorrow, you could sell off everything, you're not going to rip out what's now part of the building. The personal property becomes the grow tables, the racks, the scanners, all, all, all of that. And it's, it's about forty percent goes into the building and sixty percent is personal property. And a new one today of any size, depending on where you are in the country, ranges from about three hundred dollars a square foot building and equipment up to about six hundred and fifty. And we, we valued at the low end in Hollister, we took the rock bottom low end.
Business can get taxed on the product, you need to make the business grow.
Well.
I'm not going to keep taxes.
But, but just to tell you that we also learned the market's saturated, so.
Things are going to start going the other way now.
The biggest, yeah, I mean, the biggest debate we, we had is, is I actually wound up during our hearing Monday night telling the select board, please don't approve any more growth facilities because they're not going to make it and we're going to end up going in the hole.
Something I never realized that because it's not legal federally.
You can't send it out to the state.
Well, plus all of those expenses.
Or cash.
Yeah, you can't, you can't write off any of that on your, so in other words, when you, when you sell the product, it's all taxable income.
Yes.
You cannot deduct any expenses because legally it's not a legal federal business, so on your federal taxes, you can't deduct any of it.
And there's only one bank in the state that will work with them.
Yeah, well, credit unions, right? And then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when it comes to Mendon, any questions?
All right, so we have.
Mike has a question.
Yeah, I just want to be, so, but we have these three questions.
Yes.
Only three things are single or dual tax rate.
And then And we recommend not granting residential and not granting commercial.
Yeah, just a question on the single versus dual. As I look at this, you laid out a hundred and fifty, a hundred and ten, a hundred and one, but potentially we could go anywhere.
Anywhere within that.
Fifty, right?
Anywhere.
Yeah. And like if you look at the hundred and fifty percent shift, which I'm not advocating, but I'm just, when I read this, I'm saying you're actually going to reduce if you're, if you're, if you're saving three hundred, three hundred and forty dollars to the resident, right, as the property owner.
It shifts to the business.
Right, I mean, just like the senior exemptions, like it, the levy stays the same, you reallocate the cost to other people, which is fine, and I'm for that, I'm on campus. I'm just saying, if you were, if we were just to go with a single rate, our, the tax bill would raise, I think it's like two fifty for household. But if we shift to a hundred and fifty percent, you could actually drive the savings and that savings to the individual resident, residential owner, right, at a hundred and fifty, is that right? Am I reading that right?
At this point, they wouldn't raise much because ordinarily, if you looked at the first page with this new tax rate, their bill would go up about three hundred and nineteen dollars. So if you did a dual tax rate, it would bring it down, so their bill would only go up maybe about twenty dollars. But you'd be hammering the commercial property.
No, understood. See, I don't think a hundred and fifty is the right, but I'm not, I'm not necessarily sure we should just dismiss dual tax rate when I look at this, because I mean, I think for the same reasons, we're doing these other areas for residents to make more affordable for residents. Then I would look at and say, well, some of these options, not a hundred and fifty, but maybe some are between, you know, maybe one twenty. I see a hundred dollars reduction at a hundred and ten. I'm not quickly to dismiss that the average taxpayer to say that that doesn't make a difference to them.
We don't, of course, we don't make recommendations on that.
Well, I just make two, two comments on it, Mike. First is, once you shift, you can't go back.
Doesn't happen.
You, you cannot do that politically because you can't lower people's taxes and then five years later say, we lost a couple of businesses, let's go back because you're going to have an outcry from residents.
Okay. Political, political is just different. And we can, we can shift it every year if we want it. Okay, I understand what you're saying, Kevin, but it's not a, we can, it would just be.
Practically, it's, it's a problem. Well, legally, you can do any way you want, you can shift it up one year, down the next, abolish it the next. Yeah, I mean, what I, what I would just balance that against is you're lowering residential costs, but what effect does it have on the small businesses in town? Is it enough for somebody to say, I can't operate anymore? Or I don't want to come here because of that? That's the balance you have to think and it's an unknown. It really is an, an unknown. Yeah. And that's not a decision we make, we implement.
No, I, I understood.
We have no say in that. Other than to answer whatever questions you have about the numbers.
I, I just think that of all discussions around the impact of taxes to the average resident, taxpayer of Mendon, we are always looking to reduce that burden. This is the one discussion where we're saying, okay, not, i- i- it's a decision. I mean, I've always been for a single tax rate, but also over the last 10 years, I question whether or not is that the primary driver to bring business in, or do we need to focus other places to drive economic development? You know, I mean, there's only three towns in the area that probably have it, what, Hope Dale, Milford and Bellingham? Everybody else is a single tax rate, is that fair?
I thought Hope Dale was still singles.
I, I think they're
They're dual.
They're dual.
They're dual.
Which surprised me. Milford, I understood, Bellingham, I understood, but I saw Hope Dale, so that's interesting.
Well, I think that goes back to Draper.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, they, they had it back, back when that was open.
So when, when they had a large business that had, that carried the town.
Yeah, I mean, Milford I know very well, the big box stores in Milford never complain. The little guys come in and say, I don't want to name the business, but there's a guy who's a cabinet maker who said, I'm competing, my main competition, I have one in Uxbridge and one in Franklin, and they're single rate towns. So if I'm bidding a job for a house, out of the gate, I'm at a competitive disadvantage because I have to pay a higher tax rate. So they can outbid me all the time. And that, that's something you balance, you know, you could say step up your business, do other thing. I don't know, that's, that's what you have to weigh.
And Yeah, I think without offering, you know, town water, town septic, that all we have really now to offer commercial property is a single tax rate.
Let's, let's keep in mind too, that this doesn't necessarily affect the businesses in town. And it, it affects the businesses in town that own the property, right?
Yes.
So if you're, we have a lot of businesses that lease space or, or you don't own the property. So however, it, it will trickle down to them because now that's, their rent's going to go up, their triple net's going to go up. So it doesn't directly affect them immediately, but down the road it's going to.
I, I don't, and I would say it trickle probably isn't a, isn't, I, I know what you mean by trickle, but I would think it's, it's probably more immediate than that.
Yes, yeah, you have, you have a triple net lease, the tenant, the tenant pays the tax increase.
Right.
So, you know, again, it doesn't, depending on where you are, depending on your lease, depending on, you know, if you're a home, if it's a home business or something along those lines. It, it's the, the shift is, is huge compared to the savings is what the argument's always been.
Because of the off balance of
And we don't have anything.
You want to give relief to the taxpayers? Perhaps we might someday get a nice sized commercial property in here paying quite a bit taxes. Don't tax to the levy.
Get paid for the services you want, right?
Well, say, for instance, you had somebody coming in that could give you another two to four hundred thousand dollars a year in one tax bill. Don't tax to the levy. That goes back.
The, the other issue, Mike, is you have to remember, commercial, industrial, I hate to use the term make money. What they pay in taxes, we don't pay out in services. When you get more residences, it takes decades, given schoolchildren. It takes an average of over 20 years of people living in that house paying taxes to pay back the cost of educating their children. And I actually ran that with my own three kids. And believe it or not, my youngest is now 27 years old and I paid off their education last year. I calculated all my tax bills over the year to see if that was true, looking at what the schools had in the cost per year. Twenty-seven years to pay off three kids of paying taxes in the state.
What you're doing is what you're supposed to be doing, looking at both.
And in the commercial and industrial.
What you're supposed to be doing, looking at both.
Yeah.
Yes.
What I would recommend, if you, if you seriously want to look at it, don't try to do it without some study and say, let's do the single rate this year, but I'm really Kevin, Gene, Ken, Sue, I'm really interested in this for next year. And have us give a presentation and start showing the effect on various people. So you're more informed.
I just wanted to have the conversation.
Good.
Well, no.
That's what you're supposed to be doing.
That's, that's the whole point, it's a good conversation to have because I began to say, this is a form to really discuss tax policy. But I, I would rather see, I mean, my gut tells me, don't do it in a town this size.
Yep.
But I have no problem sitting and looking at area towns that have done it and, and talking to small businesses and coming back and saying, next year, here's a whole bunch of data before the, here's a whole bunch of data we collected, now you guys discuss it, make them sick.
Kim, go ahead, you have a.
Thanks. So I just wanted to sort of follow what Mike was saying, which is it's all of that is true, but I, and I'm certainly pro-business and incentivizing people to come to Mendon. But I do think at some point, especially as we continue to look at developments around water and sewer and the types of businesses that we're bringing into the community, we don't want to be disingenuous if we are actually considering the possibility that at some point we might go to a dual tax rate. And so I don't want to bait and switch somebody. So, and I think it's very possible that we might get to a place based upon costs that we might consider something like this. And so I don't, it might not be today, but I do think when we start talking about businesses coming in, you know, it can't be the only thing that we are offering for them to come here. Because it's always on the table every year to consider and the tax burden to residential is outrageously high. And so you know, I don't see our budgets going down in the next couple of years, so I don't want to rule it out. Let's put it that way.
I mean, I agree. And I, I mean, honestly, I'm actually part for a single tax rate, I just want to have the discussion and actually like I'd love to take the assessors up on the offer to sit down and kind of maybe take a more quantitative look at around tax policy for this time next year, if that's possible.
Yeah, well, I think I, I, I agree and, and you know, we've, we've talked about and we've been working on the possibility of water and sewer, right? As, as in part of that mix as well. So.
I would love to see the actual individual impacts to the actual businesses that exist in the community and how this would actually impact them at the different, knowing that we have certain large providers and smaller businesses, where does that burden actually fall primarily? And what does that look like in dollars? I just, we should know that as we're moving forward for the next 10 years about, you know, keeping what options we have, right? Better to know all the options than
It, it's not hard to calculate either. I mean, you just, you go pick a variety of businesses in town that you know are either larger ones and smaller family-owned ones. And you just calculate, you know, we know what the rate's going to be, you project it forward versus you know, what the break would be to people and you can model it over time.
It would be good.
So I'd be curious to find out other towns, if there are other towns comparable to Mendon who've actually gone through changing to the dual rate and what the impact was like. Like if we can find, if there is such a town.
There's only three in the area.
But I mean, well, there, I mean, there are three hundred and fifty.
I've been, I've been told that Sherborne is a community that's about 10 years ahead of us.
Yeah.
I remember I told, said before
Growth, yeah.
In, in growth and I, I'd be curious to see, you know, what kind of, what their mix is and what they've done. But you know what, that's a discussion, that's a discussion for another day. I think, I think at this point, what I'd like to do is I'm looking for a motion to close the hearing so we can take a vote.
To close the FY23 free property tax classification hearing.
Second. Roll call vote, all those in favor?
Kenny, aye.
Chanel, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Brucos, aye.
Raleigh, aye.
Mike, could you, I'm sorry to interrupt. You get the people to see if they have any.
Well, the hands are not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was
To adopt a single tax rate for the town of Mendon in FY23.
Second. All those in favor?
Does roll call?
Um, yeah, let's do it, Raleigh, aye.
Kenny, aye.
Chanel, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Brucos, aye.
All right.
Can we do not adopt a residential exemption for FY23?
Second. All those in favor, Raleigh, aye.
Kenny, aye.
Chanel, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Brucos, aye.
Move not to adopt a small commercial exemption for FY23.
Second. All those in favor, roll call, Raleigh, aye.
Kenny, aye.
Chanel, aye.
Goddard, aye. God, it I.
Brucos, I.
Thank you. Just thank you. On a side note, Mike, I'll be happy to work with you over the next year. It's actually I'm doing some modeling work for a group of towns that that would fit in as a discussion.
And you know, and one of the things that, you know, this master plan is wrapping up and we're going to be as a board, looking at the recommendations and determining. You know, which boards and committees are going to move to implement or do further study to implement. And I'm sure that this that this discussion would fit in there somewhere. So that may be a good place to put it, you know.
To to that point, the earlier point, I think the type of business we're looking to bring in, which would tie into the master plan, economic development. That you mean, the different flavors of business that also would drive whether or not dual versus, because I hear big box store, that's great, but I'm not sure a big box store is on anyone's wish.
We're not a big, we're not a big box town.
So um, yeah, I'll take you over that guy.
Yeah, and just, just if I could throw in one thing that that doesn't really did it. Um, there's a place in Cambridge called the Lincoln Land Institute, which is an international think tank that studies tax and land policy all around the country. They came out with a a new study back in February. Specifically aimed at how do you save taxpayers money on taxes, specifically aimed more at the seniors and low income people. Um, I've studied that book. Very, very thoroughly. And I will tell you that of all their recommendations, we are currently doing 95% of them and have been doing them here. And with the advent of the legislature passing the means test at Helena. That put us up around 98, 95 to 100%. We can't do the last 5% with the residence cap.
We've always been proactive on any time.
And and the 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 last 5% is that people are struggling coming up with a payment by a court, by the quarter. Write a check every month. You can't, it costs too much to bill every month and send the bill out every month. But she has to accept a payment. I know I was told a long time ago when I bought the first bought a house, my dad said, write yourself a check for the taxes every month and then you'll always have it. And the recommendation in the book is that if people are struggling, but they have the money month by month. But, you know, saving it over time, make a payment every month. That's the last 5%. We're we're doing very well in that in that regard. I'd always like to explore options because I don't want to close the door. I spent 40 hours last year in a class called tax policy that's about this whole issue.
Um, right. You know, this is, these are things that.
Yes.
Like that's rock move to that discussion group.
We'll we'll do that. So.
All right.
You know, I just get together offline and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Talk about a wood request for proposal for town hall main floor renovation.
So the town hall has been closed the last two weeks. Part of our bid process was that we required walkthrough. For these companies. So the first time the bid was supposed to close, the last time we had a meeting. It's would have been that Wednesday and then we extended it, but then we were closed for another week. So. I guess so. So far we have received two written quotes. Both of them are within the 40 to $50,000 range as anticipated. And both are within the scope where we could solicit for written quotes rather than bid. But I figured we just have a conversation about it because it's been another month. So um, we either need to, we probably should anyway. Repost on comp buys, reissue the entire thing, schedule a new time to do a walkthrough. Or we could just start soliciting for other bids then, but at this point, it's November, so it really it's your call about timeline. I mean, I don't. It's unfortunate, but it is what it is. So.
Sure. Just because of the timeframe, the time of year that we're we're losing the window to do it.
Well, it's, I think, I think no matter what at this point, if we're being realistic. The con, the firms that we have responding are ones that we anticipated would respond. And the prices are what we anticipated they would be. So I feel really confident about all of that. The only complication with this particular project is that it actually requires a walkthrough because it's so nuanced. Because of all the strange things that involved at the ceiling and knowing the historic restoration pieces. So like, it's really important that anyone who would bid it come through at least and make an appointment and see it. I guess the question is. Do we want to formalize that process again or should?
You you had two?
I have two so far. Yeah.
Has anybody, do you know if if the the town hall being closed for the two weeks actually stopped anybody from?
Yes.
Well, then I think we should, I think we should consider extending it.
Perfect. Okay.
I mean, that's my, that's my.
Put it out to comp buys again?
Well, that's my question.
Well, we were going to figure that out, which is whether we could just extend what we had because it was supposed to close today or if we have to repost entirely. And so depending on that.
It closed it. It it closed at four.
Right. So it might be brand new posted.
We can't extend it. We got to start a little.
It would be an amendment to to push it out, but I I can't.
Uh, was the deadline to get a to solicit interest or to?
No proposals and it really isn't fair. I mean, we we I would say realistically. There at least one other person who wants to actually legitimately put in a bid for it and it hasn't been fair because the only time that they could have would have been this morning, basically, or, you know, or.
Yeah, we need to, we need to do it because there's no way if if we turn them away because it was closed and it was beyond our control because.
Right. And I mean, it's unfortunate, but I feel confident no matter what, even if we still have two solid bids from two vendors that we know who are interested no matter when it is. And so it's not as if we're going to lose them, I think, if we push it. I just wanted you to be aware. And we're doing it again and why we have to do it again because, you know, in case anyone's wondering.
To do that?
Nope. I just, we're going to go ahead and do it and eventually I'll put the award or on the agenda when we're done with the process again, but it's now.
How long's the timeframe if you amend it?
It's like, I think we, it's two weeks from the date. So by the time we get it back in comp buys, it's two weeks from that date and then it would be our next meeting date. So at a minimum, three weeks. Right?
And this is for the first one. This is not for the.
Right. This is just for that section on the first floor. But I mean, the good news about all of it, I suppose, is that it's within that price point. Anticipated that it would be that actually doesn't need to go through the formal process. So if anything, it's helped solidify that. We're on the right track, right? We've been on the right track. And so, but we are doing this extra step because we want to.
Do we have any update on the on the DEP and the well testing and we can actually be completely functional?
The, no, the only, I have the same update from the other day, which is it's going to take a while, which could be months um for that to come through. But we're here and we're functioning. So far it seems to be going.
So is that just the function of them doing their testing?
I don't actually know what they have to do in order to clear it. I don't even know if um the well is capable.
Yeah.
It's got some acid in it. They're not all coming down here like it's the town well to fill up our buckets to bring them home. Nobody drinks the water here. I mean, we've got the.
Right.
Right. It is. I don't know what the actual.
Well, it's a public, probably it's a public water supply, so there's laws.
I get it.
Yeah, right.
But I mean, it's one, at some point, like, doesn't logic have to just totally take over and be like, okay, this is not, again, it's a public water supply, but it's not a restaurant. And again, unless your hands are going to burn off when you try to wash them in the sink.
I just, yeah.
Let's hope not.
And yet we still send our kids there.
Oh, I know. And they have to drink bottled water. But I mean, I think the good news in all of this, even with the well, and I I've said it a couple of times to some of you over the last couple of weeks. It's incredible how close we came to chaos, right? Like weeks, like weeks. And it's also incredible that that location that got approved, basically emergency approved, actually is producing water like we need it to. Like, those are both total blessings.
Yeah.
I mean, this all could have gone so bad. So like, it's an inconvenience, but hey, it could have been a year without water. So this is be better. So it'll resolve itself soon. But speaking of the campus, they're paving tomorrow.
Got it. Saw them dropping stuff.
Oh, cool. I was going to ask about that.
They're only paving up to this back, that's plenty of the map behind you, but basically this corner that. This section here and they're going to pave some other parts in the spring. Yeah, that's the piece that they're coming and it towards the back, the back piece, right? That. So then we'll eventually be able to park back there and then they're coming back in the spring, right? To do that, that new exit in that section right there.
So the plan is they're just going to go all the way into the back and come around.
Yeah, so that you can now start parking back there. We're going to do that. I'm pretty sure um.
It looked like they made that corral.
Because they're planning on doing the painting and the striping of the new um electric uh stations. So I'm assuming that far. The issue with why it all at once is because of the the wiring, the poles, the curbing.
Over here.
Yes.
Yeah.
And they weren't sure how far it, you know, the schematics are good, but they, you know, it really depends on once they get out there, where they're going to make it to on that corner. This this time. So that'll be great.
And are they going to pave this? Are they doing binder and and the top coat all at once? Or I mean, I'm sorry.
Just going to put the binder down and finish the sprint.
There is some concern with the type of material that it is because it's different.
Oh, it's the, it's the stuff that.
No, I don't think, right?
Well.
Only certain sections, like the parking areas.
Yeah, but there's some concern that it has to be. This is from two weeks ago, so bear with me. The concern is that because it's maybe because it's different types of surfaces that we have to actually, we can't get away with just putting down one coat, like in coming back and doing it all at once. Because it'll deteriorate what we've put down. And I don't know if that means the main section or the side sections because we didn't. But um, they they have to do as far as they, as much as they can.
Okay.
Right before the winter time.
I was just more curious.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly.
All right. Well, then let's talk about upcoming meeting dates. You don't need to meet again until it is 16th and Thanksgiving is next Thursday. And what have we, we got the 30th is on here next.
Well, we were saying the 7th and the 21st before because it fell back in line with that second and fourth week rotation and that we could add the 30th if we needed to for things.
Yeah.
That helps the water health too, because they're right now, we're in, we got in line with them.
We got it.
Granted, they're still meeting remotely, but.
Yeah.
They may want to start using the room.
So do we just, do we anticipate anything we're going to need in sooner than three weeks?
I will just say this, we can plan on the 7th and the 21st.
Mm hmm.
There may be some personnel related executive sessions that we need to have. And if that did occur, we could always do it remotely, okay? Because we wouldn't be going into open session.
Executive session anyways.
Well, right, but I'm just saying, if if we had to call a meeting for that stuff, we could be more creative about it rather than taking up the calendar space. Because it would be specific to just personnel related things. That may come up before the 7th.
So does anybody have an issue with waiting until December 7th?
No.
No.
I'm good. Topic in one of those December meetings, um, can we put a financial package together? I was thinking about the question around, um, you know, free cash balance at the town. You know, we sort of looked at him, but.
Yeah.
I would, I mean, we used to, I'd like to actually review it at least quarterly, but I know we're well into it, but maybe um, something in December, just to see where we are. But I mean, regular check.
We're going, you know what? And that's coming because we start, we always start the budget and that's where we begin. Um, to 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 do a financial review and we can certainly do it quarterly. Um, normally. You know, we would, those questions would be answered by the FinCom and we did all have it in our, you know, at the meeting, we all had it in. We just needed to open and what Lonnie set us up, we all did have the ability to go in there and that, and I was actually doing that. When she leaned over and had the number because she already had.
Yeah, with with the pack, like a package that would show us year over year comparison, run rates, whether it was running hot, cold, year over year. Average, five year average of, I mean, I'm talking about a financial package that looks at our budget historically, understand where. So that the 10 year analysis you did, the tree board and stuff, that'd be at your fingertips.
Mm hmm.
And I'm assuming the new software probably has something like this.
So.
If not, I'd be happy to work with Jody or you to kind of figure out what something like that would look like.
So let's talk about that for a second. So the timing of all of this. And I I've spoken, I think to Mike about this. Um, so what's happened? So we have a brand new financial software package. Springbrook, which is great, which is basically a cloud based version of KVS, which we had before. Okay. The current version that exists right now that we're using for this fiscal year is almost, it's 90% a model of what we have been using in the past. That's not what we want to move forward with. What we want to move forward with for FY 24 is the one that matches UMass. Counting by code, just like every other town in Massachusetts. That document I have to create between now and two weeks from now, which.
Wait, wait a minute. I know I I don't, I'm not. Sure enough, when we, when the previous board, when we discussed this and purchased this Springbrook. And we got this great deal because we were do, because we were that kind of in the sweet spot between the little and the big. Was supposed to do what what all the other towns are doing. You're telling me it's not now.
No, it does do that. The the issue really is, and we've, it's doing it. The issue is you need a person like me. Who knows, like, let me just do this in the simplest.
You're in an alignment thing between how what we call it versus what the state calls it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So right now in our budget document, let me just give you this general, you've seen our budgets for years. So we have a section in our in our budget that's called Town Hall, 199 Town Hall. That's not a legitimate actual code under UMass. That is, that is like other municipal and we basically have just stuck everything in that 199. So what I need to do, which no one else could do, Eric or Jody or Sean and moving our old system, they they got our system over and it's in. Now what I need to do before we move forward is go in there, look at every line. Make sure we're now charging the right person to the right department and this and basically blow up 199, just as as an example entirely. Make it go away and put everything that was in there before where it's supposed to go in an actual operating budget. So I got to do that before I roll it out to the departments, which is coming soon. So I'm already doing it. Um.
So so now's the time.
I I.
It's got to be right.
Actually now.
But but I mean, in an interim. We export data, we can create a package in an Excel format that we could, I mean, basically roll things up, roll things down. That's not heavy lifting.
Oh, yeah. No, 100%. There are reports that we run now. There's an expenditure report that we can run right now. Um, that, but what it's not going to have right away, and this is where we have to, I I think, talk to you, Mike, about this. Especially with the FinCom, I talked at FinCom about it actually. It's going to be tricky because it's not going to have that year over year data because we switched to a new system that we're used to having in that downloaded spreadsheet.
The old data is backed up somewhere.
Correct. And so I do, to your point, I think it's 100% necessary for us to capture all the actuals from all the past 10 years, even in the old form.
Yeah, well, that's, well, that's the whole point because in the old form, it gives, if you look at it, you can see percentages year over year from 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 one year. But you should be able to drop into Excel and and compare it from the last five years for the last 10 years.
Right. And so, but those types of documents that we need for the future going forward, we got to make those like.
And and fair, fair enough. I guess I'm getting way over skis. The question I'd say to the board is, is that a worthwhile endeavor? To put together a financial package that we can have access to 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 do that, whether it's interim, future states, future state, you're working on that. Interim wise, I just don't like flying blind sometimes, you know, I'm kind of, I want, I want the information.
Yeah, I mean, we should be able to, I mean, I have all the booklets.
Right.
From from the last 10 years and every one of those booklets from every year from the previous has those percentages in it. So we can look back in history and see from one year's though.
Yeah, I'm talking about inter year.
Well, what I'm saying is we should be able to, we should all, but that's all backed up. We should be able to pull all that. And and it should be a fairly easy list to create what you want to create.
Relatively.
Relatively easy.
Right. Now you're backing up. Yeah, right. Well, is it from a board's perspective, is that something we think is worth doing for the next few weeks? That can start, Randall, we're working with Jody to get hands on that data, something like that.
Are you proposing that? Sorry, you would, you would do it? I mean, who's, who would do the the lifting, the heavy lifting?
Um, whoever could do it, I'd be open to doing it if if we get the exports. But to me, it's more about how to represent it in terms of management.
Right.
Design wise.
So realistically, timing wise.
Yeah.
Based on what's going on right now and the budget about to happen. Okay. So if I can now post STM. Get this budget thing set up that I need to get set up and then create it in Springbrook, right? With, that will be December, which we will. With that will be December, which we will then need to start. We were gonna have a revenue presentation anyway um, by the assessor and the accountants and as the kickoff of the budget in December, we usually do, right? So that would be there. Then we would basically start that month of December, the departments would start putting their budgets in, which is not that taxing. And then we're right into the budget in the meetings for next year. The realistic timeframe for having a like an analysis like the one that I just cranked out for the tree warden, I mean, is probably April or May realistically.
Yes, but the difference, but the difference between the tree warden and really all the other budgets. We 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 do have the solid information and all the other budgets that's in that are in those booklets. So I I really think we can, you you can get what you need from the booklets.
So we do have.
Okay, not the entry year. And this is the difference.
You say that.
Budget planning process and then managing the execution of the current fiscal year, two different animals.
Yeah, but when you look, but I I think what you have to realize is, you know, when you look at any particular year and you're looking at the current year, you don't, you don't really have actual. You don't have actual in the book because it's projected. And in the middle of the current year, you don't really know where it ends up. You have to go back another year. But if you if you pull out, in other words, whatever year, if you pull out two years, you've actually get actual numbers for a few years back. So we can actually pull actuals out from all of them to look where we've got. It's just difficult to know where we are in the action, the actual in the current year because the year is not done yet.
Right, no, but we know what our current budget, our forecasted budget is for this fiscal year. We know much what our run rate is.
Yes.
I just want to know, am I fifty percent burned?
Yeah, so you want run rates for.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's.
Well, that's a report that I sent for this year.
Yes.
But in terms of what that document is, is an actual thing that we need to have because of the transition, hundred percent. I have done similar ones in the past based off, just like what Mike is saying now with the the old FinCom books. This is always a matter of, and it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's mostly tedious, like it's, it's like opening up, going back to F Y fifteen, opening up that spreadsheet from that year, copying whatever information it is, making sure the lines are, I mean, it's just that, right? And so, but we are gonna always have these PDF historical books and we hope that we'd always have these spreadsheets, but we do need something that at least captures all of it.
I just want to check real quick. Does Springbook give you entry year, year over year comparisons? Because everything I'm hearing right now.
I don't know.
I don't know either. What I do know is.
We need to know that.
We need to know.
We shouldn't have gotten that software.
Correct, right. And and what I was, what I was told, because and I talked to Eric, because I remember having a conversation with Eric.
Probably does, but I if it exists.
We may not have the historical in there like we have to.
I am self teaching myself in the software right now. That's what's happening, right? This this only.
Right, so.
But so I am learning every day when I'm in the system. Do I know if it's going to run that for sure? I don't know what it's gonna run for sure. I don't, that's like I said, I only identified that we even needed to start categorizing these other things two weeks ago. So it's, you know, it's gonna take time.
I I just want to back up because I want to get not talking about execution, but the concept of select board having a financial package that we can access on a periodic basis. One, does that make do? If if nobody wants it, then I'm gonna stop.
No, no, the expectation, the expectation is that we were gonna have this and we've been talking about it for 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 three years now, trying to. And that's what this new software was gonna do is make it easily to manipulate it, to see it, and also put it in the same format as the rest of the.
Yeah, I mean, I can really extend control report just like I used to be able to and email that. That's not that big of a deal. I mean, that.
Well, let's start with that then.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, downloading it into Excel and manipulating the data. That's gonna, whatever we're gonna end up doing, that's, I'm not there. I mean, I mean, that's not hard to do, but I just haven't done it yet.
There's implementation of the software is a thing. There's interim solutions, which could be a different thing. That's gonna be really clear here because exporting to Excel and manipulating data, it's not, I don't call that a heavy lift.
It's not a heavy lift.
Right, right. So I don't also want to enter, I think that the.
As long as the.
To get the software going.
As long as the.
I need to become familiar as anyone with this, how the how the software works. That's a key to everything we do.
But but the Excel piece even the it to be able to export it, you have to, it has to be there historically for us and and I don't know if it it still exists or not.
So.
I know there's PDFs of it. I don't know if, I don't know if the Excel.
So that's what I'm saying, which is I have done this exercise in the past because I have been asked to give comparable rates over the last ten years for us versus the school and increases in years. So I have done spreadsheets in which I have done exactly this, which is gone back all the years, opened up the thing, copied the whatever I was looking for at the time and then put them side by side and, you know, and and broken it down by general government or whatever, whatever. It's just time consuming only because I have to like do this one plus this one plus this one plus this one based on our old, it's just it's just that, right? But once it's done and it's in, then we'll have it, right? We can, well, it'll be one document we can go back to for that stuff. But going forward, that data won't be in the new system, right? And that's the part. So that's why it is valuable to have an Excel spreadsheet that captures that.
But K V S had historical data, right?
Yeah.
The physical, the the on.
And it will, it will go.
I didn't, why wouldn't we do a back file conversion to the new software to bring the historical K V S in?
We did. It's the one that won't line up with what I'm having to make by hand.
Because the categories aren't the same.
Yeah, right. A lot of it will be.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to comment that I think there's a discontinuity here and historically what we've done doesn't make sense going forward. And if we're going to new software, set ourselves up for success and organize it so that, you know, next year we'll be able to very clearly compare it to last year's budget easily within the software.
Understood, but if you're gonna map it, you can remap the historical too.
Yeah.
And if you pull the data over, you're gonna remap it in the new software. Why aren't you remapping that historical data?
That's not ordered out. I don't think, I don't think it's that easy. If if it is, if it is great, but I don't, I don't think it is. Maybe not in the software because the way. Yeah.
Right. I'm thinking of it in terms of where we're going to be moving all these salaries and these positions to departmentally so that they actually make sense rather than gathered. And I don't know that if we ran a historical report from K V S from a previous year or imported that into the new system, if it would correctly pull because some of the thing, I mean, if it would correctly pull to the now new location or not, I don't know that.
It'd be a map. It's most back file conversions, you should be able to map it.
Yeah. So did this software package come with any support?
Yeah, it it did. I mean, it came with support. So keep in mind that in addition to like the budgeting piece of it, which is just a piece, it's the main processing financial system for the town, right? For everything that we do, the, you know, the budget part is just a module that we bought in addition, which is basically secondary to everybody else but me, right? Like I, I am primarily, when it's normally budget season, I mean, the extent that other people have in the budget is accounting creates a a new version for the next fiscal year in the budget. And then I am the one who manipulates the data all the way through, right? There's not a lot of other people. It's really been a sort of a one man band. Um, and then we would download that data and then do whatever in the spreadsheet. This will eliminate the download of the data. My hope is what it will also eliminate is like, we can just run a report right as it is and everything is where it's supposed to be going forward. It might not look like it looked before, right? Like, it's gonna take a lot of walking through in these like FinCom meetings about this is really this and this is really that and why is this? But like, once it's done, to bring this point, like, this is what we want for the next five years. It looks like what every other, well, it looks like what a lot of other towns do. So they grouped correctly in the way they're supposed to be, like administrative, general government, you know, like public safety, public works, like, you know, the actual.
Third party software support from the vendor?
We, what we bought was primarily for the the actual financial piece, accounts payable, accounts receivable. We can buy more for the budget piece, but like, like I said, I've only actually been in the system. What has it been? Less than a month now doing it. So for the budget piece, I don't know what we need it or not.
The accounts payable and the accounts receivables still have to align to the right proper accounts, right? So regardless of budget, I mean, these are two different functions.
Yeah.
So if you've lined up accounts payable or you or you need to, and we've got third party support, we, I said, yes or no, do we have third party support? Because you should not, you honestly, you should not be having to manipulate new software to align it the way you need to see it.
Yeah, but I'm the only one who can do it because.
Unless we have third party support.
No, well, but third party support won't know the nuances of what's in one ninety nine in our department that we. And that's like, that's the sort of stuff, like they've moved over this other stuff and converted the lines that they could that to match the best that they could for most of it. But there are sections of our budget that have always just kind of been afterthoughts that have just existed, but now we got a course correct on. And there really isn't anyone else besides me who could go in by line by line and know what stays here in this line, what goes to that line, this charge goes here, should we put all the utilities together? That sort of thing, like the no one, you know, and so I I have to do that now. You know, once that is created, you know, and then the actual functionality of the software for doing different things with the budget, I'm sure there are a million things. I just haven't even got to that thought process yet. I mean, we're like I said, I'm a month in to even figuring how to pull up the new one.
I'll stand down. But I mean, we, Kim, you you're a spoff, right? You're a single point of failure in this process. Would that worries me? I'm just gonna say that now. I would think Jody needs to be involved. We have a financial team, right? They have to start, they they are involved, right?
Yeah, of course. Well, they're involved, but.
And I I I don't mean to contradict you, but I think that Jody could help you do that. I know, I know what you're saying when you say you're the only one that can do this because you've been taking point with the budget for for.
Right.
Since you've been here, but she needs to be read in on that.
No, a hundred percent. We have weekly financial meetings. So let, I mean, we're really getting down into the minutia here, right? So like of what I need to do.
And just, and you don't need to, all all what 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 all that needs to happen is it would be helpful for this December meeting if you could provide us with the current status of the current budget.
Yeah, that's something I can send today.
Well, we don't need it today. What we need to do is have it for December and that that way we can talk about it at the meeting and talk about where all the all the different departments and budgets are within the year.
Right. I mean, I think it's important to be cognizant of the actual timeline in which any of this has evolved, which is we just got on this software in June or July, right? Just got on there.
Right.
So we bought it six months before that, they trained over the winter. We're operating on it now for this fiscal year, right? Just getting here and now getting to the budget module part, right? Like, we're in it, we're in it right now. So you know, it's a, it's a process. And I mean, in addition to learning all of this stuff, we are also doing the rest of our jobs, right? So a Jody has been dealing, Jody, Eric, Sean, I mean, they're all dealing with year end right now. We have the auditors in the building. I mean, we have a lot of things going on, right? Is it going to happen? Yes, it's gonna happen. When is it gonna happen? Like I said, realistically in a timeline, I don't, you know, budget comes up next. So we'll see, right?
It's just the point of a single point of failure, right? Whether or not every, this whole town is a single point of failure. I don't care where you are in this town. There is somebody that has intimate knowledge of 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 a certain piece. And yes, it could be frustrating. But it, there's a nu- numerous amount of people that could get in a car accident today, not be able to wake up tomorrow morning and we're gonna lose that that intimate knowledge that that person has. So again, like, like, uh, Kim is saying, that software just came online. It can only equate it to the software that we bought for our company. It is enormous. But we're now just putting our finances, budgeting, it does our whole ticketing, everything rolls into it. We're getting to our budgeting piece right now and our financial piece. And I want to stick hot needles in my eyes because this is not what I do right now. Again, I see what you're saying, but I think that this is a better conversation other than the information that we need coming up, but a better conversation right before budgeting season to see, okay, hey, we've got this where we need it to be. And I agree, we should, if if there is support there that can help. But again, is that support gonna be there to help and say what she already knows, which I need to get these accounts into this?
Right. I mean, the whole.
It has to do a brain dump.
I I I think what what we're trying to do is is eliminate that single point of failure by getting it all into the system. But I I don't know any other way to do it except in whatever, whoever.
Forget it, though.
Right.
Well, and that's the other part. I mean, then maybe you should look at it from a little bit of a different perspective. Do I? Should I be the person, the sole person in any, or should any person be the person that is actually sitting down for the next two weeks, creating a brand new budgeting line by line in a system for an accounting system that we can move going forward? Maybe not, but that's where we are in this place. And then before that, I mean, there certainly is the option right now as we stand for me to do none of this, which is like, if I didn't do it, who would do it? And should we then just continue on with the budget that we've used in the past, which is clearly not formatted correctly?
We already, we've already, but we know that's not the case. I mean, what's gonna happen is that, you know, we were given support that my assumption was that 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 all of this transition was being done.
Right. And it is being done, but that's the part of this.
But you're doing it.
We can transition the piece and just use the old budget that we had in the new system, or I can stop right now and I'm sure you guys would prefer that I hit pause on what I'm doing and fix it for the next thirty years right now. And there is nobody else who could do that but me.
Yeah, because at some point it has to happen.
Only one who knows what's in these lines, really. So in that what.
I think that's just the point that we're at right now.
Correct. And that has to get done and be prioritized.
This is where it, where we are.
I mean, an option that we definitely have is to not do it this year and do it in a future year.
No, no.
But I would rather, the reason that I'm doing it forcing the issue now is because the departments that are going to change, I'd rather than just get all this change at once, which is new system, new line.
This is what I'm gonna say was two years ago, two budget cycles ago, you were going to do this manually with a with a new spreadsheet with new budget headings.
Yes.
And then, then we decided we were gonna get Springbrook last year and then it got delayed until July. So the short answer is no, we're not gonna delay it again.
Well.
If that's how it has to happen, then this is this is what.
That's the thing.
That's what needs to happen.
I there's always an option here, right? There always is an option to not do a thing and just go with what was.
It it's not, I don't believe it.
Prefer. I my preference would be, but of course, it's ultimately up to you all. I mean, I'd rather just crank it out and do it right and and get it done and and hope that I can actually turn it around in time. And if that happened to turn out to be, you know, I originally wanted to go to the departments in November. Well, it's November, November's over. I just got through S T M. Now I've got to do this thing. So it's in December and they're gonna need a lot of handholding about the new system. And so I, it's just, that's we have a financial team, we definitely do, but they're also doing things too. And on something like the budget, which it will eventually end up with Jody and it should end up there. This transition period and we're in it and, you know, I couldn't task, I couldn't ask her to do this. She wouldn't know. I mean, or Eric, really, right? They don't know that a position that we are using for building and planning, how that should actually be categorized.
You know what? Here's what I would, here's what I would say is I believe that if you took Eric in his company and you told him to take Springbrook, which he knows and and to to do the mechanics of it, I think they could do it. And you would have to, but they would have to keep coming back to you with questions when you, when you break out those different, those different line items in those different categories, you would have to, you would have to, you'd have to answer those questions, you know, where does this go?
Correct.
Where does that go? And what you're saying is that you would just rather do the whole thing yourself rather than dealing with one of them.
It's, it's, we're based, let's just assume seventy percent of it is the same because but I'm thinking specifically about where we charge things to and employees, right?
Right.
Some work five hours here and ten hours there, thirty hours over there. It's a true representation of where the department costs.
I was on the phone today with Eric because once a week I get those warrants. And there was just a couple of questions that I had, which he very easily explained to me. And my my understanding is, once we get this new system, that it won't be, it won't be ambiguous anymore. It'll be more standard. So does anybody have any other questions?
I just want to go forward.
What is, is such a report possible after the transition? I mean, the historical record, I mean, they exist. So.
Yeah.
I mean, is it something that we can, would it still be of use in your imagination in the spring when we're looking at the new budgets? If there's time to do it then?
I mean, but I thi- I think you're almost gonna have two views, one of old K V S, one of the new alignment, because you're not gonna wanna, unless it.
Oh, backfill it from previous years.
I mean, I I think it's been backfilled. Somebody did a backfile conversion to the old mappings and that might be a missed opportunity, right? But if it's there, it's there. You could always get a a sense of what your run rates were historically based on the old K V S.
Yes.
And sort of extrapolate that in our heads and then ultimately it'll build going forward. But yes, I'd say I'd be curious to just should I just talk to Jody and say, what kind of reports do you have available just that she can just punch out?
Well, I could run the, I can, the expense for any.
I'm trying to give you a break. I'm really am.
Running an expense, running a revenue expense report for everybody is no big deal. That's a document that's easy, that you just log on and print. And I think anyone who has access can actually do that. It'll run for the entire thing. And then I just email that out. That's no big deal. I know that all of this stuff has like outrageous functionality. I just have no idea, right? I haven't got there yet, right? I know that all of this stuff has like outrageous functionality. I just have no idea, right? I haven't got there yet, right? I gotta get to the data first. So I think it's going to create awesome budget documents. Something really cool that's really easy to produce, but I have no idea at this moment, you know. Or even like knowing like what kind of charts it creates or what a finished document looks like for a budget. I mean, we didn't buy the software for the, the presentation of the budget, you know, we bought it because we needed to upgrade our financial software and KBS was the easiest transition, right? And so it'll get there, just, you know, it's gotta be prioritized or it'll never get done, which is, should be Mendon's slogan.
All right, do we, and we don't have the executive session.
We do not. We will have another one in the future.
So do we wanna talk about this, do something about appointing one of the alternates on the ZBA to replace the guy that just resigned?
Awesome. I mean, they have alternates there for a reason. Alternates naturally move forward. That would be the the way it's been in the past. Let's do it. Who is the, who who is the most senior of the the two? Well, I don't know. Does anybody else know? Sure?
Can we do an appointment without it on the agenda?
Well, it says, it says right here, other topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to meeting. And we just got the resignation today.
Perfect.
Right. And we have, and we have a meeting on, I I think we have that, when is the ZBA hearing?
December 1st.
The December 1st hearing, so we're not meeting before then. So should we do this?
Sure.
Yeah.
Though if they can pull up the alternate, just like they normally would if somebody wasn't there, I think maybe we, do we wanna ask the board their opinion? Or even ask the candidates their opinion?
Well, it's, I I mean, the issue is we have two alternates, so they're the, they're the ones that would get in the spot. And right now we have one and that just resigned. So it seems to me it's natural to just take whoever it is. I mean, it's not gonna stop the functionality of it, right? Because we've got two alternates, so whoever's the most senior one would seem to be the which, which, which one has been on longer, do you know?
So.
It was first.
I guess.
All right. So we don't have that information anymore. So we'll just let them function on the first, then we'll just on on the first. And then we'll just deal with it at our next meeting.
Would it be worth it to reach out to them and see if either of them are interested in the actual position rather than the alternate, just so we know that we communicated our piece, right? Like just send an email that says, as you know, there's a vacancy, you're both in alternate positions or either, are you interested in filling the role till the expression?
Well, we can do it formally. I know they both are.
Okay.
So. The question is, which one has been, yeah, who's been on the ZBA as an alternate longer? Do we need to open it up to general population or is it, that's my first question is, is the normal course of action is one of the alternates? Well, that would be, that would be true about backfilling the alternate position, right?
I don't know. The alternate's an alternate.
Well, we can do, well, well, again, I was told that's, that's a guide. I I don't think we need to, I I think that before we get an alternate, we need to put the 45. Well, that, well, that is our standard, right? But not, certainly not to take the alternates and let them wait for another 45 days as an alternate before we fill the vacancy. But I I guess, and if, or if both of them, if neither of them wanted it, then I would agree with you. That if both of them declined, they just wanted to stay as alternates, then we would post it for 45 days to to get a new ZBA member. But if those two have already been there, wanna be on it, e- either way, we're not gonna do it tonight.
Yeah, but is this the only board or committee that has alternates formally part of it?
I don't, do you know, I don't think anybody else does.
I don't believe so.
I mean, that that the only reason I'd say, I would assume if I was an alternate, I'm sort of next one up.
Right.
You know what I mean?
You would assume, right?
Yeah.
But I do think we should send an email just to confirm that they're in the loop on the process. That's all. Like, this is vacant. You're both alternates. Right?
Yeah.
Just, we don't wanna, we need consent of the person that's, we're gonna take the action on.
That's fair. Yeah, affirmative consent. Yeah.
Well, so.
No negative consents here.
I'll, we'll send them an email and and get, get the answer.
Right. And then all our things are checked.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn. Oh, a- actually, I, I went, does any, what does anybody think about having some kind of a holiday thing like we did before COVID? Remember we had a meet, we had a gathering at
Galliford's.
Galliford's.
Yeah, I I I like that.
I mean.
Did we? Can we use the, I mean, we don't know, we have a budget line item for something like that.
Can't we use it for that event?
Can we use the festival account money, like the event?
Okay, so.
What's your opinion, Kim?
I have a couple of thoughts. I love a party as much as anybody. That's my first thought. If we have a party, we have to invite everyone in town. And we usually do, we send out invites particularly, and it's like a volunteer recognition.
Yeah, anybody, anybody who was volunteered by the town, anybody, you know, all the, all the seniors, everybody in every board and committee.
So at the end of the last time we had it, now it's a different board, but we had talked about rotating the location. And I say this, my, my personal opinion is I did not like the location downstairs for our event last time at Galliford's. I loved the location for our event when they gave us the space upstairs at Galliford. That was more of a walk around, more intimate. I I don't wanna do a ballroom sit down setting. I don't think that's conducive to what we're trying to do. So it'd be, it'd be nice to find another location in which we could basically get a room that is smaller. We don't have that many people coming that we could sort of do that instead of sitting down and.
So we moved out of the senior centers, that we're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So was the room, but the room downs, the elephant's room, that, do we do it? Did you, cause I maybe I didn't go to that one, but you mean that, that.
It was, it was downstairs and it's very like.
Yeah, I've been in there, but but.
Yeah, so they didn't give us, so this is the way it went down. Thank you, Galliford's for both years. So the first year I insisted that we be upstairs because I didn't wanna have a formal event. And they had just opened, basically, so we had a lot more leeway. And so we tried to pick a Wednesday night when they're not super busy. And we got the whole window wall room along the back, plus we had the bar and there were couches there. And then like, people did come in to eat dinner, but like, wasn't too much of a disruption. So we went back to do the same thing and they said they couldn't do that anymore because they couldn't guarantee the space because of the tables. And wouldn't we rather use the beautiful function room? And that's true. It's a beautiful function room, but it's just too big for what we're talking about here. And so I felt like as an experience, it was fine, but nothing like the year before where it was just the flow was better and people were really mingling better. And so I do think, you know, if we are gonna actually continue having holiday parties in the spirit of fairness, we should be putting all restaurants that have the capability to do such a thing and rotating. I was thinking about the front of the greenhouse.
I was just, well, no, you could actually probably get, I was just gonna say that the whole greenhouse. There's a night there, cause there's nights when they're slow that they might just say, all right, hey, we'll close the private event for you.
Exactly.
Knowing that there's gonna be.
There's that little bar in the front, then you could walk around. And if you wanted to sit down in the back, you could go back, right? I was thinking something like that to mix it up. And then it shows that we're rotating and it can handle a flow of people coming in and out. So it doesn't feel like, oh, I gotta like a wedding or something. It's.
That's good, cause in the pinch, I could actually walk home from there.
So there's all of that. What I would tell you is, I need to look at the budget. And I say that because we usually pay for it out of selectman miscellaneous, and I'm pretty sure we paid for an easement or something already this year out of selectman miscellaneous.
Things have changed.
There was something we had to, that came in here that we had to pay for that we did in advance.
And what about the, and what about this?
Was it the, 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 the survey?
Yeah, down here, it's.
That, something we paid for, they came in.
Oh, okay.
Right, something we paid for out of it. But we typically spend before, like brace yourselves. I mean, our original budget was like $2,500. And we almost pulled that off. It ended up being like $3,500. Keep in mind, we buy no alcohol. We just buy food. We do not provide alcohol at town sponsored events that I am part of. The one downstairs ended up more, being more closer to five to six. And I just, I don't like that at all. Hit me in the gut. So. I.
Drinks and appetizers at, at the greenhouse, I don't, I.
Correct. I'm just saying, I would say.
I mean, with with inflation this year, maybe 4,000.
Yeah, right. So I just, like, that's what I wanna say, which is, you gotta pick a number that you feel like you could justify to people when they say the town is spending our tax dollars to throw a party. What's that line, right? Which is why we've also, we make it about celebrating the volunteers, because it's true, right? We're very grateful. You know, but without getting outrageous. This isn't gonna turn into some
I get it.
Thing. Or I may, maybe that's your call, actually. I am not gonna suggest turning it into a thing.
Yeah.
It was $400.
Yeah.
Before that, everybody made something.
Right.
And we had it at the senior center.
Yeah, no. So we shifted out of there a couple of years ago, right after Galliford's open, so that more people would come that weren't just staff. We're like in the middle of the day. And we got a great return of people. That first year, we got an awesome time.
And I think with, with COVID over and I I I just think it would be a good.
Get back.
Yeah.
To see everybody.
So, so can we, what about the, what about the money we just moved into the rock, the block?
If you had a financial package, we can look at it right now and see what the balance.
You're sitting here and it's late, I'm gonna do that, right? Because no one has anywhere else they wanna be, right? Just.
I was supposed to be at the border health.
Hmm, no.
Yeah.
Onto my Springbrook from here, see if it works. Talk amongst yourselves.
What do we think? Like 4,000 bucks is a budget?
No, but how many people that do you recall came to the?
The first year, I feel like we got 80 or 90 people.
I was gonna say.
The second year, we maybe got 40.
Oh, and it cost, ended up costing more.
It cost more.
Because, because they based it on a certain number.
Fun. Okay. Stand up at the front the whole time. Like, it just felt like.
Let me, let me ask, I'll ask.
Ask the guy.
Lose him. I'm sorry, I'm having a brain fart of what his name is right now, but I'll just see what he would say if we had 100 people, what.
But it would just be good for us to come up with a, with a number here and just vote it here now.
And do what, oh, I see.
Yeah, and that way.
About to exceed 4,000.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. So.
I'll make it work.
Motion made. 4,000 has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So that's, so not to exceed 4,000.
Now we gotta find it.
Doesn't mean we have to. We'll leave it up to, we'll leave it up to you.
This is what I'll tell you. I'm always gonna pick a night that's in the middle of the week because it'd be cheaper and it looks like more business than party. Um, and I will, it's a month, it would be a month out basically from today.
Yeah.
So. That, well, yeah, so it would be.
I wouldn't do it any closer to Christmas.
No.
Christmas Eve.
Okay, so motion to adjourn. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. You wanna go to, there's a place in Milford. Just blown, open stairs. I have a sip and shop that Janine.